Ready? Calling this meeting to order, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
Depeña will be here shortly.
Graziano.
Here.
Notari.
Here.
Ravel.
Here.
Shulubert.
Present.
Mayor Manheim.
Here. Suntry notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the July 6th issue of the Star Ledger and in the July 9th issue of Bellevon. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Bellevon Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the municipal office.
Pledge allegiance.
Aye, pledge allegiance.
Just welcoming everybody to our combined conference regular meeting. This meeting started one hour earlier because it does include a budget presentation. Anybody watching this meeting live on Facebook or on the township website, you can find the budget presentation on our township website at belvelnj.org. Anybody watching this after it's live, that budget presentation will remain there. Before we get into the presentation, we're still going to move forward with the regular portion of our meeting. Therefore, it's time for item number five, which is the report of the manager. Just want to remind you to speak into the microphone, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. So I will be brief tonight because I do want to leave ample time for our budget presentation. But I do want to just first start off by acknowledging the department of the clerks. Police Department, Fire Department, during that tropical storm that we had two Tuesdays ago, in about a two and a half, about two and a half, two and a half hour period, there were over fifty trees down. I believe the police responded to over a hundred and seventy calls by phone, had maybe sixty calls. So it was, you know, nice to see how quick we responded and probably within two days, just about the entire town was, was cleaned up. I also want to report that I know we've been talking, talking about it for a while, but Tom Harris and I were able to use a balance of 2019 transportation money and we started the resurfacing, started the resurfacing of the municipal parking lot on the west side across from town hall. We did the sidewalks this week. The blacktop will be down Monday or Tuesday of this week coming up. And we ordered the first pay station for that lot. And the marketing board closer to police department to review, to review new meters. And the meters that we're looking at for Washington Avenue and other areas where we do have parking meters will include a meter that accepts coins, credit cards, and apps. So it's all of the above, which is great. The, also happy to tell you that our GPS system in all municipal vehicles up and running as of Monday, that was something that we were working on. All public work vehicles, senior citizen vehicles that are transporting our seniors, construction department vehicles, all have GPS. We feel this is going to be a much more efficient way of dispatching our vehicles when they, when they need it. Green Acres, we're working on the high school field Green Acres project. We just found out today that there would, will be a required soil surcharge. So somewhere at the end of November, the field will be off limits for about six months. But that's all good progress being made on the Green Acres application. So we do have some, some movement on that project. I'm going to leave Councilman Ravel or Councilman Cazarelli to discuss. We had a meeting up at Fairway Park and some other areas. I'll leave that for the committee. So I think that's basically my, my report for now. And certainly, I certainly will assist Judith when we discuss the 2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. To record reflect that Councilman Depeña is now in attendance. The next item we have is the report of the mayor. Optimistic that some of my reports are getting a little more detailed. For months, we went through COVID and while we're still going through COVID, there was really nothing to report, no new activities or events. But it seems like what we have been doing during COVID is starting to come to fruition, to which I know the manager already made some different comments to that. First and foremost, I want to thank the manager and Judith and our financial team for the presentation that we're about to receive tonight. Again, anybody just joining us that wants to see that presentation, there's a PDF on our website, belvelnj.org. This is the kind of presentation that I think Council Deputy Mayor Graziano has been asking for, something that I think the council has been wanting to see in years past. My seventh budget here. And in years past, we never really got this kind of presentation. I think ideally next year, we want a little sooner rather than have it the day that we actually have to vote on introduction. But I think the parameters, the PowerPoint, the slides, I think it's exactly what, and I think that, I think the general public is going to benefit from that as well. So thank you for that presentation. For those who don't know, I had sent a letter to the manager last week that is going to be read this meeting into communications. And part of that letter was asking for some budget cuts going into 2021, specifically ones that we can maybe start for January. I did receive his reply just a few minutes ago, as did the rest of the council. I know that was emailed out to those council people that are not present here. So I've already asked the clerk to add this to the first item of September's work session where we could actually discuss some of these changes and what we're willing to do as far as implementation. I, for one, am constantly, the one that's out there, constantly gets the emails. One of my responses to a resident today about the tax increase is on for communications. Just so the council and department heads and members of the public can see the types of questions that I get and how I have to answer them. So if I have to continually be answering for budget increase and tax increase after tax increase, if the tax increase, I want the residents and the public to know that we're serious about making some serious changes for beginning next year. I'm looking forward, I didn't really have a chance to review your letter, Mr. Manager. You just handed it to us. But by next meeting, I'll definitely be getting to that and looking forward to having a conversation with my council colleagues about that. Manager mentioned parking lot across from town hall. We have two municipal park lots on Washington Avenue. That one is finally getting asphalted and lighting, I believe. For years, there was no lighting there, so I'm grateful for that. Manager already did it, but I also want to commend Belleville Fire Department, Belleville Police Department, and DPW for the job they did during the hurricane. I have access to a police radio and that day I had it on all day. And you can hear the calls that go out, you can hear the responses, you hear the different departments and different members of the first responders coordinating. And it was truly impressive. And again, I commend all three departments, fire, police, and DPW on their response. Mr. Manager, question for you. I've gotten a couple of questions from residents about nine eleven memorial service. As we all know, that New York City supposedly is canceling the tribute lights. I know that my colleague from across the river, Mayor of North Arlington, Dan Pronti, he's interested in maybe doing some lights. He's asking for some coordination from some neighboring towns. If we would also join in on that, maybe something we could explore would be great to explore. I don't see how COVID really has any effect on putting lights up for nine eleven, but that might be something we want to look into coordinating with different municipalities. That said, manager also said it, GPS in towns. We had issued a statement about a week ago or two about some of the customer service decisions that we're making here. Again, I get all the emails, I get a lot of the complaints about cars not being in town and this car was in this town and why was this car on the highway and I saw it and I get them all. So in my opinion, police cars are all GPS. We know where they are, why shouldn't we know where our instructors are, our DPW are? Why shouldn't we do that? So again, another initiative that the manager executed and executed well. I know today was the first day. You had a map of all the town vehicles and where they were, at what time. And I think it's going to work out well. Another thing that we're about to do is hopefully record telephone lines. Again, just like every eight hundred number for every credit card, every bank you call, they say this call may be recorded for customer service training. I get a lot of emails about the conduct of certain employees in certain departments at times. And sometimes you believe it, sometimes you don't. At least now, the manager and the department head will be able to go back to the tape and find out whether or not that person was acting accordingly or not. So again, some customer service things that I'm really, really proud of. Lastly, post office complaints, we get a lot of them. I'm getting blamed because this November is an all-vote-by-mail election. I have nothing to do with it. I'm against all-vote-by-mail elections and have nothing to do with it. But if you do have post office complaints, please check the township website out at belvelnj.org. There's an email on there to Erica Doutry, I believe her last name is. She works for our congressman's office, has been extremely, extremely helpful in getting to the bottom of some of these post office types of complaints. I think, I think that's it for my marriage report. So we only have one meeting this month, so we're kind of counting this as a first of the meeting, which would include some committee reports. As you probably know by now, we have ad hoc committees, nothing that's really set in stone. Any council member jumps on to a committee or a subcommittee if they feel they have an interest or a level of expertise in that. So with that being said, I'm going to start to my left, the deputy mayor. Anything you're involved in?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Just make sure your mic is on.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Mayor. The last meeting that we had, some conversation came up about rec and some travel. Then we formed a committee and that would be in sports and arts and things of that nature. And perhaps to say that we did bring the recreation departments headed by Tommy Augustus and then also the AD for the high school. And we had a really good session. Things, good things came out of it, some things we didn't know, some things we knew. And now we're going to have another meeting I have to schedule. And that's up to me to continue that through along with Councilman Notari and Councilwoman Depeña. So some good things are going to happen from this.
Good. I'm just going to go my left to right, who's in the room here? Mr. Notari? Just put your mic on, John.
I think it is on.
No, no. Yep, no. No, hit right in the, yep. You're on.
Okay, yeah, I was also at that meeting that the deputy mayor was the chairman for the rec department along with Councilwoman Depeña. It was a very productive meeting. We had the coaches from the high school there, as the deputy mayor said, the rec department, Mr. Augustus was there. And it was meeting and greeting a lot of these coaches and also hearing any problems that they have or things that they needed. So it was really a very, you ran a really very good meeting, it was a very productive meeting. We were here a good two hours and we will be meeting again, but I, I thought it was really, very, very good. Speaking of committees, I just want to ask, because I want to compliment someone, but what committee, was there a committee for the best backyard in Belleville? Did that go under a committee? I don't know.
That was me.
Yeah, I just want to compliment that because it was my neighbors Gina and George Smith that got the best backyard.
It was nice, yeah.
Yeah, she has a Hawaiian tropical theme. She really puts a lot into her yard. She's got these pineapples that light up and whatever. So I want to thank the two of you. She's absolutely thrilled about this and so good, that was a great idea and I want to thank you. And one more thing, I know this isn't a committee, but you did mention about the mail with Erica. She's been very, at the, at the last meeting, I did speak about the mail problem that we're having. She's been very productive. I've been giving her email out in her office phone out to many people. Things, I don't want to jinx it, but things seem to be getting, things seem, I don't want to even say the word little. Things seem, seem to be getting better at this point, so let's hope we go that way. Thank you.
Sure, she's very, very responsive.
Very good, very good.
Councilman Depeña?
Nothing on the line.
Oh, we got a lot. All right, so first of all.
Five, five minutes time.
All right, hit the eight times. Last week, myself, the mayor, and town manager met with the head of our green team, Gabby Benetini, also Councilman Ravel. Two of our projects that are going to go forward, Fairway Park and the high school, we have all funded through grants. A dog park going there, a basketball court resurfacing, which is going to be tailored for children. They're going to be smaller courts and striped and painted, you know, for, for kids to use. Community garden, baseball field renovation, and proper signage. So that's going to move forward very soon. Also, in regards to September eleventh, I had a committee meeting with Captain Nick Reiner and our secretary Jackie Balmann. And we went over the, let's see, we have a very honored guest speaker this year. I will present that at a later point, but he is very, very honored in this township and I know he'll do a good job. So we'll, we'll go over that soon. And also with the backyard, little ad hoc contest that we did, me and the mayor did that, just like we did the Christmas one. And we just do little things like that to inspire a little bit of community pride. And had no cost to the township, all through donations was the, was the winner's reward.
Yeah, can you just thank who gave us the gift certificate?
Oh, yeah, that was, so that was T and L Rinaldi's. Very good, they just opened a brand new, well, it always was Fringe, but now they open it as T and L Rinaldi's, whoever knows that location. Great deli and, and they're good people, so.
They were very, very appreciative. We went, I went, I was actually there.
Right, for the presentation.
For the presentation and.
Oh, good.
Very, very nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Any council members that are on the phone? I know we have Councilman Ravel, do you have anything to say? Anything to report?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask about, I know we had some issues when we visited Fairway about the trees being down over there. Did you get a chance to, did you get that though yet?
I'll let the manager speak, just speak into the microphone.
Yes, Councilman Ravel, that was done late last week, early this week. All those trees have been removed.
Great. The sign is in the range, I know we're trying to fix that too.
That sign has been fixed and is back up.
Great job, thank you. So, yeah, and that goes along with the comment on the, on the storms. I mean, police, fires, everybody that's concerned did a great job. I mean, that sign was actually blown down.
Wow.
It's just broken, so. And I got, with Councilman Cazarelli's talking about, our trustee Gabby Benetini has done a phenomenal job in funding, putting this together, coordinating for the, for that, but the green team wouldn't be the same.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to, I want to thank the local, and I also want to thank the clerk. This is the first time I'm really using the concept and, you know, it's a pretty decent interface and it seems to be understanding, so, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Councilmen. So yeah, what the council is telling about, we are all up here using different technology for the first time. We've got some kinks to work out. A lot, a lot of new technologies in this room once the public rejoins us. Councilwoman Burke, do you have anything to report?
I just want to commend Gina Smith for this wonderful backyard that she did. And also Gabby Elmee for all the love that she has had for it. That's it.
Okay. Okay, so that's going to conclude our committee reports. Did, next item we have is item number eight, introduction of the 2020 municipal budget. So as we promised, we are going to do a budget, budget presentation that's going to be brought to us by our CFO, Ms. Judith Curran. She's going to go through her PowerPoint presentation. Council that's here seated has a digital copy on our screens. All our two council people that are remote have a PDF version of that. Any member of the public that's watching us, that joined us a little late, the PowerPoint that she's about to go through is downloadable on our website. If you just go to belvelnj.org, you can download the exact version of PowerPoint that Judith is going to be walking the council through now. So without further ado, I'd like to receive our CFO, Ms. Judith Curran.
Good evening.
Is she going, wait, isn't she going there?
We're going to start with some 2020 budget highlights.
No, 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 she's got to be my, that's why I thought she was going there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think it was on, is that on?
Now it's on, just get it.
Well, sorry, good evening.
Yep.
I'd like to start with some 2020 budget highlights. As Mr. Iacar said, it has been a difficult year. We worked very, very hard on this project. I started in February, I have to say, Mr. Iacar, I'm right for you. I started, I believe it was February, September 17th, and he had given me all the budget sheets. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think it was day one.
Yeah, I think it was the weekend before you started.
Right, right, exactly.
It was.
I don't know if I should have really said that or not, but actually before I came around the job interview, the day I left, he said, hey, you got it, am I right? And I had said that I was going to start working on the budget and I did do that before I started. So it's been a long progress and I would like to just note, initially say that the department has been very, very helpful. We worked very, very hard from February. It is a little delayed, but we kept going back to the drawing board because we knew revenues were going to get down and we didn't want to have a big tax increase. And I have to say, Mr. Iacar suggested a 10% decrease in our request to board and most departments working to do that, okay?
So let's just not gloss over that. What was that, a 10% decrease across the board?
10% decrease across the board in O and A for department heads, okay? And they worked with that and they did it and they were receptive. They really were.
And what's all we need for everyone who does this?
That's other expenditures besides salary and wages. We also were able to secure some money from, from the CARES grant for COVID-19 and also FEMA. And that enabled us to actually reclass a lot of our salary and wages and other expenditures, which actually kept the expenditures down this year. So with the highlights, you will see, this, these actually affected our budget. First one is 3% increase in general liability insurance. That we have no control over, insurance rises. That was a hit we took.
Well, I, I'm not quite sure I accept that premise, but we can go on.
Well, liability insurance versus health insurance.
Right, and that, that actually is dictated, I think you have the joint venture, I think it's a joint insurance. I mean, every county has a different one, I believe it here, suburban, I believe it's called here and.
You're talking the GIF?
Yeah, they more or less dictate if that's going to be. We did have an increase in garbage disposal costs and aside from, I spoke about that. I think we might be looking something like that next year, maybe doing something differently.
How does that, explain that to me? How does that happen where a 28% increase? Did we throw out 20% more garbage? Did the rate of, of our tipping fee go up by 28%? How does that happen?
When I, I started in February, the budget submitted to me and I believe it was probably about 2.8.
Million?
Last year. I think it was maybe 3.2, that sounds about right.
Isn't that bid, how does that?
So, so we do have fixed costs, which are contracted, right? So we have a contracted price, so we know that's not, that's not going to increase. Tipping fees go up and when we pick up, when we pick up recycling, for instance, on Wednesdays, we don't know what that's actually going to cost us until we actually go and tip it. And then the tipping fees are on top of that.
Yeah, but isn't it, don't we have a ballpark from the previous year? We, so do we throw out 28% more recyclables?
Not 28% more, but more. So our tipping fees went up, soil removal when we empty out the catch basins, when we remove that soil, that, you know, again, so the more work we're doing, the more sewer base basins that we're cleaning increases our costs. So when we say 28% in garbage cost, that includes leaves, that includes solid waste, that includes recycling, that includes all the soil that they take out of the catch basins when we break the street and we remove that soil. That's all part of that.
Tonnage, it goes by the tonnage.
Didn't we used to pile that up in DPW into a mountain?
Years and years and years, exactly. We could do that, but that would not, would not be addressing the other issues.
Got you.
Through the mayor, that's the reason why?
Is that the reason why? Is that one of the, that's why, I believe, Steve, that's one of the reasons why?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm not definitely with the contract that's going to be a problem. Then on the revenue side, unfortunately, in case of COVID, courts were closed. That's a big, that's a big, that's big fees for us. So they were down 44%. And then of course the banks.
So can I just stop you on that one? So 44% in municipal court fees. It's not, court was never closed. I mean, I'm not, I'm addressing the wrong person, I should be addressing the manager. Court was never closed. So we can't necessarily say that court revenue was down. What revenue wasn't coming in? Were we not writing parking tickets, sweep tupper tickets, construction code tickets? Because court just facilitates the, the fine. But we had Zoom meetings.
But the revenue that's generated by parking tickets and street sweeping tickets and other court cases that would result in fines, that went, that went dark. That went dark, so that added to our revenue shortfall. So again, no, we weren't giving out meter tickets, we weren't giving out sweeping tickets.
Work sessions were closed.
They were closed, yes.
Their work sessions were closed for.
Yes, and then we went to Zoom though. Now we're on Zoom.
Because recently, when the Zoom, they were closed in the first few months. There was no way to adjudicate the tickets for fines and fees.
Okay.
That's where the shortfall was.
So I'm assuming, Mr. Manager, in your recommendations, we're looking at departments that are, that have a lot of access?
Yeah.
Employees, time, efficiencies, all that stuff.
Very simple formula. Again, we have to sit down and we have to, for better words, do a desk audit on every single position. Because quite frankly, if we have a particular department that loses 4%.
I mean, you would think 44% in fees would be a, a certain substantial portion of decreased workflow too.
Absolutely.
But, but the employees get their increment raises every year. So that's, that's the problem that we have here, where revenue goes down and employee salaries go up, by contract, by the way, not because you or I want to.
Right, but one of the suggestions or recommendations that we would review as a whole is do we need X amount of people in one particular department? Especially if the workload is not there. I mean, again, not, not to be mean, but we don't need to pay somebody to come to work if there's no work.
Well, there's two things, and I'm not picking on this one particular department because you know we've been having conversation about department departments. But in this particular department, I also know that they have more technology that led to efficiency. We used to handwrite tickets here at Belleville.
Chief Middick brought in, Chief Middick brought in e-tickets.
E-ticket.
And that, by itself, is all technology. And the purpose of an e-ticket and that technology is to reduce your costs.
Cool. But if we don't reduce the cost, that's where we get in trouble here.
That's what we have.
We tend to find efficiencies with technology, but never reduce the cost. Okay.
That's what we're going to review.
Okay, I'm sorry, Judith.
That's okay, and then unfortunately, COVID also affected that, they lowered their rates.
So I saw that was a 41% decrease, but what does that mean dollar wise?
71.
71.
Believe it or not, I think Joe probably has a really accurate number right now.
I need you to, Judith, just to speak into the microphone, please.
I think Joe probably has a real accurate number because he was working on that. But I do have to say, we were lower, I believe it was, and I can't remember if I'm wrong, Joe, we were at maybe about 1.5 and we got lower to 0.05, right, okay?
What does that mean dollars wise?
Dollars wise, I would say.
Four hundred.
We were going down.
Four hundred thousand.
About $400,000.
Prior year, this year 75.
75, right.
Wow.
Right, but however, there is a little, can you hear me? There is a little bit of.
Push it, just take it right in front, there you go.
A little bit of light at the end of the tunnel because the other day Joe said to me, what do you think about if I just call up, can I say the name of the person at the bank? Is that okay? Can I say person, thing?
No, no reason to. No reason to.
All right, I respect the person at the bank or whatever and say, well, you know, we do have X amount of dollars in there, we've been with you for so long, so anything you could possibly do for us as a, especially flying. And believe it or not, he agreed to raise us from 0.05 to 0.25.
Wow.
Which, you know, is, is nice, right? So, I mean, so I think it's going to be maybe about, what, maybe we said maybe $20,000 more to take. So I mean, it doesn't seem like a real lot, but $20,000 is $20,000. So I feel that was a good initiative.
Yeah. So now I see that, so that was basically the, the budget highlights, or basically four bullet points.
Right.
3% increase in liability insurance, 28% increase in garbage disposal costs, 44 decrease in municipal court fees, 71 decrease on interest on investments, and anticipated over a million dollars that never really came in. So the rest of your presentation, I mean, we're not going to go line by line of the fund balance on that, but if you could just take us maybe slide by slide and just give us a quick overview. You don't have to go line by line. The next slide is 2020 anticipated revenue.
If you go to anticipated revenue, just real quick, the first one refers to the first slide, but fund balance was down, okay? State aid would remain the same, you know, which wasn't, wasn't a good thing for us.
So normally, we would expect an increase in that?
Right.
Okay.
And that basically forced the state. The key, key number to concentrate on is amounts we raised by taxation, as you can see, okay? Nineteen to twenty, that's up 3 million, which basically means our revenues were down 3 million including the surplus and that translates to taxation. Which could have been worse, but like I said, we were very, very effective in reclassing a lot of expenditures to the CARES Act and to the FEMA. Because we're, of course, we incurred overtime like any other towns did, you know, as far as COVID is concerned, it's applied and so on.
So can you just drill into that? So three, approximately $3 million more raised by taxation, which sounds bad to me and sounds bad to elected officials. It sounds like we have, we've done, sadly, it is, we raised taxes by 3 million more dollars. But can you just, I know you briefly went over, can you just explain again why? Was that because we went out and hired 100 new employees?
No.
Okay, so can you just speak to that?
Like, as I said in the previous, the first slide, revenue is really, really down. I mean, when you look at 71%, 400,000, 75,000, that's big, okay? There are million dollars that we could not take in just because of operation. That's another one. The court fees, another $300,000.
So you add up $300,000 in court fees, a million dollars in lost revenue, when you add all that up.
And a million dollars in surplus. You're right, get 3 million.
Somebody has to make that up. And unfortunately, it's residential taxpayers, which every single member of, every single member of the governing body is a homeowner and a property taxpayer, as I always like to point out. Okay?
So if we go real quick to appropriations, as you can see, in spite that revenues did go, you know, revenues did go down, we still actually went down, okay, in expenditures from 2020 to get to 2019.
So salaries, I just want to highlight because I'm a politician sometimes.
It's okay.
And I want to make sure because what we're going to hear tomorrow is that the mayor and this council increased your taxes $3 million. So what we're not going to hear tomorrow is the fact that salaries and wages are down almost a million dollars, $900,000 and change. So let's just repeat that. Salaries and wages are down almost a million dollars from 19 to 20.
Yes.
Okay. So I want to make sure that when anybody comments tomorrow on the 3 million part, they also mention the million dollars that were down in salaries and wages, which is a huge portion of the budget. I know we had this email conversation today.
Big portion.
70 something percent?
75%.
75% of our municipal budget salaries and wages. So what the general public needs to know is that there are less employees today than there were last year. And last year, there were less employees than the previous year. So employees are going down, which means that salaries and wages are down a million dollars from last year. I just want that to be one of the takeaways any of the members of the public that are listening to get from this experience. Okay?
Now, you'll see other expenditures are up, okay, but that's also due to COVID. Many towns across New Jersey, they had to buy that, no choice.
Right.
You also see statutory expenditures, they're actually down. Because what the law allowed us to do is we were able to take, anybody that was redeployed for COVID reasons, we were able to take part of their pension costs and put that into the CARES Act to get them reversed, which actually put our expenditures down. And you can see, that's almost $400,000. Okay. Other expenditures did go up somewhat. Capital improvements went up a little bit, but we have, you see I have a capital improvement slide, also getting some key things done, especially roads, okay? Our debt service went up, but that's also because we're paying some debt down. Deferred charges remain the same. They're going to be paid off in the next few years. And a reserve for uncollected taxes, that's actually down. But the way that works is that's actually kind of like a buffer that you don't collect the taxes, which means we actually are collecting taxes.
And the law dictates how, what percentage we have to keep a reserve.
Right. And because we do collect so well, we don't have a lot in that area. We have accelerated stuff. So basically, once the accelerated side, I think we're at about 98%. We're taxed about 98%.
That's very good.
Which is very good for us.
The next slide is, if you're following online, the next slide is the tax bill comparison. I mean, if you just very, very briefly go through that. The average assessed house in Bevel has gone from about $240,000 a couple of years back to $278,000 is the average assessed house. And then if you just want to take a very brief minute, just-
Well, as far as municipal, the only two categories that we can control, or the only category we control actually is the municipal, okay? And you can see that's gone up, I guess it's maybe, it's got $303.75 including the library. The library is the last item, but also, that also is not controlled by us. That's actually state mandated. We have no control of the school district, go to county. That's secret to us too. And unfortunately, they went up also. So our portion of the bill is $303.75, what comes to 0.108% increase from last year.
Okay. So the average assessed house of $276,000 in Bevel would get you a tax bill of just $10,300.
Yes.
That's a lot to me. That's just a lot. Comparatively speaking, it's not a lot if we were a township that had top of the line facilities, top of the line school district, top of the line services. I think we're getting there. As a council, I think we're doing a great job to improvements to the high school, $5.5 million. The school district's $50 million investment into their district. School district is doing another facility at number eight school. So I think, and I think our programs and our services that we're giving our seniors have all improved. So that $10,000 number that I think is high for the average assessed house of 200,000 is relative compared to the services you get and the facilities you have in your community. I do think as a council, we've been doing a good job getting those services better, getting those facilities better, working on things like dog parks, community gardens, open space. I think we're getting there. I always said, I don't think we're going to ever address that they reduce taxes, but we could always try and give better facilities and services to our residents. And I think we're on our way to that.
But I'd like to mention, you know, that is a little higher. But if you didn't have COVID with all those decrease in revenues, you would not have, and increase would not even be near that.
Gotcha. Okay. To which, to which-
Next year, some revenues come in and-
To which the general public would say that next year they expect a decrease.
Well, if revenues come in, we'll have, we have that.
Okay.
Hopefully we will.
Are you going to, I'll hold you to that next year. It never seems to, it never seems to happen. Next slide, 2020 capital improvements.
We have to pray for COVID to go away, right?
Yes. 2020 capital improvements.
Capital improvements. I just listed a few items that we're working on that I actually, you know, I thought I should bring to light because I think also the public has been paving the roads. They want to have good roads. And I did get this nice complete list from Tom Harris, the engineer.
Okay.
And I don't live in town, but I would assume that you're probably familiar with the areas that are being worked on, okay?
So again, I don't want the public to think these are the only roads we're doing. These are the roads that, Mr. Manager, these are capital improvements. These are roads that we're bonding to pay for. It's not the county. It's not CDBG.
That's correct.
So I don't want them to think these are the only roads we're doing. These are the roads that we're actually borrowing to do.
That's part of our, right. Those are the streets that Tom Harris has put together.
Gotcha.
Part of our total transportation.
And they are Graylock Parkway from Union to Passaic, Fairview Place the entire length, Valley Street entire length, Lake Street from Hana's to Geraldo, Ralph Street from Graylock to Little. We also have Washington Avenue, Main Street, flood mitigation.
Right. And a lot of these have very big, grand components, so I could actually, we could ask the whole, or town, if I could.
And again, capital improvements are basically if I have a home and I have some equity in the home and I take out a home equity line of credit to do my roof, to do my siding, do some landscaping, I borrow money to do improvements. This is, we're a government. That's exactly what we do. And this is annual, these are projects that are always ongoing. Every year, we take on different projects for that. The last one I see here is the upgrade to computer network. I think it was about $500,000 we spent, not just in town hall, but all the municipal buildings. We went from the Stone Age to, I don't even know where we are now, but we're way ahead of, way ahead of any other municipality, especially the audio video capability. Wifi's not there yet, but I think next, third phase. Third phase, September. So that was all part, again, that's an investment that we borrow to make so that we can better our services, better-
And as I said, most of the first two has been very good. And they actually have to be done by the show, so we can make sure that that's all working.
And just, and when you think of capital projects and capital equipment, what it means to this particular budget is 5%. So if our number is a million dollars, in this particular budget, we only have to require and set aside 5% because we're bonding that money.
Right. We pay that overtime. So there's two slides to capital improvements. The second section is potentially just our water utility. A lot of people are concerned about our water. I know that we're replacing meters, lead service lines, I want to say 500?
No, I'm sorry.
400. Approximately 400 lead service lines replacements, which are residential lead service lines. That's going to basically be a pilot. I know it's a, not a great choice of words for some people, but that's a pilot program. Once we get this done, these 400 done, it's going to be incorporated into our road improvement project that as we open up a road, we deal with our water fee, which I know you've already addressed, Mr. Manager, with our fees and all that stuff, and work it out that way that it's not coming out against our municipal bonding capabilities. It's coming out, we don't have a water utility per se, but we're bonding against our water, from what I understand.
And that gets submitted to the infrastructure bank. That's correct.
Okay.
And that's actually, believe it or not, that's 50% off interest. That's also a really great program.
Okay.
And the reason why I picked these, the water we need, the land that we're going to replace, we have to do the lead service lines, we have to do the TDP water testing. That's, we actually, I compare that with Tom Harris, that has to be done. And Tom Harris, he's getting some funding. We're going to do asset management. We're not active enough to see what the water utility has, and that should be on record. I think he's going to have to fight some climate issues, but it's Tom Harris.
Yes, we're working sort of closely with him on that.
Just to conclude, what I would, I thought it would be a good idea, I don't know what they've done in the past here, but I'd like to be able to put the budget on the website. We'll be working on the user friendly budget starting tomorrow. We'll get that, you know, up and going.
How soon can we get the budget that we're voting on today on the website? Tomorrow? Okay. So if anybody's paying attention, this budget presentation is already on the website, bellnji.org. And tomorrow, I'm told, the budget that we're voting on, just on introduction, will be there as well. I know the user friendly budget takes a little bit more time, but that will also be there. And the PowerPoint presentation that we went through is here now. Okay, so that's basically our entire PowerPoint. A lot of these topics here basically relate to Communication Number B, which was a letter that I wrote to the township manager last week. And the council has just received his response to that. I've already asked the clerk to add his response as the first item on the September work session. But if you don't mind, do you have that now?
I do.
Can we just, because I want to stay in this budget conversation, so.
Do you want to read the letter?
Yeah, let's just do it now so we don't have to do it later.
Mr. Icono, in light of our current and seemingly ongoing budget issues-
Turn the microphone off.
In light of the current and seemingly ongoing budget issues, I hereby requesting you to provide a list of far ranging budget recommendation cuts that would have an immediate and dramatic effect on next year's budget. Please understand that this is my seventh budget process with the township of Bevel. Every year, our various professionals contribute to majority of the council, but next year will be better. Sadly, this seems to never come to fruition. I understand that COVID-19 negatively impacted the budgets of nearly every level of government throughout the state. And while we don't expect another COVID-19 next year, we have no way of knowing what the future holds. Therefore, I believe we should work on the only true finite number, which is the ongoing cost of running the government. I believe my council colleagues will support this initiative. After all, we all seem to be concerned with rising property taxes and many of my colleagues have supported several redevelopment projects in the past few years, which will eventually yield much needed additional revenue for the township. While I'm intimately familiar with this budget, I'm not sure I'm in favor of passage if the future is going to be business as usual. If I'm going to make a difficult decision to potentially vote against, to raise taxes, I will need some assurances that not only will difficult conversations and decisions be had, but that approved recommendations will be immediately ready to begin implementation for January 1st. I believe we have an opportunity to begin righting this ship as we head into 2021. Last budget, we have one council member vote no on the budget stating that she is for the taxpayer. Logic would dictate that if she voted against last year's budget and this budget is even more of a tax increase, she will once again vote against this budget. I believe we are all for the taxpayer, as every single member of the council is also a taxpayer. To be frank, I'm not sure the votes are there for this budget without guarantee that much needed changes will be in effect for January 1st, 2021. I've often said Bevel doesn't necessarily have a spending problem. It's more of an income problem. However, until our anticipated future revenues realize, and it is coming, I believe we have an obligation to the residential taxpayers to stop believing. If you can provide your recommendation at Tuesday's council meeting, it would be greatly appreciated. The council will then have several weeks to contemplate. I fully understand that implementing some recommendations may take time. However, I believe there is enough time to get them in place for January 2021.
So I've just since received the manager's reply. It's pretty short. Can you just also put that? Do you have it? I can use mine. So this, we're just seeing this for the first time. So this was the manager's reply to my letter.
Mayor Melham and Town Council, in my first year as township manager, there was a concentration on the review of the day to day operations of each of our departments. During this initial period, we were able to make immediate, immediate changes that cut operational costs substantially. Unfortunately, due to the financial challenges created by the COVID-19 pandemic, this year's budget incurred a major decrease in our ratable base and a significant loss of revenues resulting in an increase of the municipal tax rate. I will be reviewing a variety of options over the next couple of months. And I would suggest, as a team, all financial recommendations are considered careful. At no point should these ideas be construed as an endorsement, but as a tool to thoroughly appraise every possible cost saving measure. As with all austerity measures are, our examination must include input from all bargaining units, township departments, and civil servants guidance. I am confident that this evaluation will allow the town council to use its best judgment when confronting a fiscal crisis we are experiencing.
Now we have a list of potential items to review.
Review table organization of all departments, job title audits for all township positions, reduce department size where revenues are down due to COVID-19, early retirement incentive program, review health insurance coverage, state plan, eliminate insurance opt-out program, furlough plan to reduce work week by two days, layoff plan with demotion, review the car allowance policy, explore shared service agreements with neighboring municipalities, explore regional services, explore recreation fees, sell municipal properties, albeit at one time hit, explore renting recreation facilities.
So that was basically, we heard the budget presentation for the budget that's being put before us today. It's just an introduction. We'll have a chance to hear the public on that and have some debate on that before the final reading. But then again, it just was timing with my letter and the manager's response, all relating to the budget. I acknowledge, and if you read my letter, and it's I think out there on social media now, that I said I'm not happy with this budget. I'm not happy with the increase. It's a huge increase. And unfortunately though, I do realize that for the most part, our hands are tied. But I keep believing that next year is going to be better. I no longer necessarily believe next year is better. We don't know if COVID is going to continue next year. We don't know if revenues are going to continue to not come in or not be realized next year. So with that being said, I've asked the manager to provide some cuts and I think it's time for this council to consider some of them. And I look forward to maybe having that conversation in September, our next work session, ahead of the January 2021 budget. So that was really it. Anybody have any questions for Judith regarding the budget presentation itself? We've all had a chance. The manager did email out this budget five, six weeks ago to all of us. I've had the opportunity to sit with him and I think Judith discussed, I know the deputy mayor's been in. Any council member has the right to come on in, sit with the CFO, sit with the manager, as I have, as I know the deputy mayor has, I'm not sure if anybody else has. But we've had a copy of this budget now for five weeks or so. I'm intimately familiar with the budget. Goes without saying, I'm not terribly happy with it. It also goes without saying, and I repeat this every chance I get, that this governing body, this council, has taken more votes for savings than any other governing body in the history of Bevel. More times than not, we have voted to decrease salaries, eliminate positions. It's just, it's amazing that we've done it this many times. And yet, if you go out there to the general public, either they don't understand it, they don't want to understand it, or they don't believe it. I had a conversation today about somebody telling me about all the raises we handed out. Really? Show them to me. Because I'm unaware. I am very aware that we change the salary ordinance all the time. But if you, depending on where you get your news from, which you should question all those sources if you don't get it directly from us, nine times out of 10, those are because we're reducing salaries or reducing the starts, or creating new positions at a lower salary so that new employees don't fill those high salaries in year five, six, seven, eight of the contract. So I look forward to having these conversations in the near future. Okay, Judith, I thank you for that. I thank our financial team that's been here. And if nobody has any questions, I think-
I have one comment.
Sure.
Because I want to do my thing too.
Okay.
Like I said, the department heads were, you know, very, very great to make things to me. They were very compliant with NIS4 and the side account. Joe Cavano was a great, great source to me, very helpful. I have to say also, he doesn't mind if I call him Detective Chin, but I think that's okay, right? He's been very, very good with supplying me with grants and, I mean, he's really been very, very good with that. So thank you for that.
And of course, Mr. Ficoma here, he's been...
Joe Ficoma. I've been with Joe for 20 years now.
And I, and I, and I think, I know you might not be happy, but as he can tell you, we started out with a much higher budget, right? And Joe, we have to say, we worked so hard, honestly, how, I couldn't tell you how many revisions, right, Joe? Back and forth, I mean, quite a few, just to really, so we did do our best.
Good, thank you, and we thank you for that. We've never, again, Bellville's, Bellville has a full-time, full-time outside professional Township Manager now, and we have a full-time professional CFO, two things this town did not have for the last five or six years, which is amazing. But if you look at our budgets and stuff, it's, it's clear that you guys are having a great impact, so thank you. Okay, so now we have to move, I always question why we have to pass this resolution ahead of public comments and all that, but we have to do it at the beginning of the meeting? The introductory?
Basically, the public will have their opportunity to speak on the budget at the public hearing on September 22nd.
Okay, so we do that, that's part, that's a resolution, it's after the public hearing? Gotcha. All right, is there, is usually something we have to read, is that not this?
Not for the introduction.
Not for the introduction?
Just a resolution.
All right, I said we make Vinnie introduce it.
Yeah, you could put on...
History will have your name associated with it.
Make a motion to introduce the 2020 municipal budget.
Second.
Really?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion made in second to introduce the 2020 municipal budget. We have a motion made in second, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
No.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay. All right, we're moving along with our meeting. So next item, item number nine, is the approval of the minutes. Actually, Anthony, do you want to pause for a minute, just to let anybody out of the room that we don't need anymore?
I know Joe has another engagement tonight, and...
Yeah, for anybody that's watching the live feed, we're not normally this packed in the room. We are trying to socially distance up here in the dais, but because of the budget presentation, we had three additional professionals in the room. You know what, let's just, I'm not going to pause the meeting, but let's just give them an opportunity if they want to sneak out, to sneak out. The meeting is still... Yeah, Anthony, do we need Judith?
I think we could, everything else on the agenda, I think, would fine with, so... And generally, for the department heads that have been listening...
Department heads are still on?
I believe so, yes.
They never did their roll call.
You know what, why don't we do that now, while they're escaping? Do we have a roll call of department heads?
I can certainly do that.
So while we're allowing a minute or so, we're just going to take a roll call of department heads that may or may not be on the telephone conference bridge.
Billy, Billy is addressing a family emergency, so Billy's on the call.
Chief Oliveri? Mayor Cabanelis?
Yes.
Frank T. Lorenzo?
Here.
Tommy Augusta?
Here.
Holly Britton? Deborah Bosley?
Again.
Chief McKeeney is here.
Excuse me, guys, guys, you're right in front of the microphone.
Did I miss anyone? Sorry.
Kevin Esposito.
Kevin Esposito is present.
Willie.
Willie.
And Mr. Valano.
Charlie Hood?
Charlie Hood.
Which department is Mr. Valano representing?
He's representing Ferguson.
Gotcha.
Did we miss anybody?
All right, that was a good break to let them escape the room. So we're going to move on now, item number nine, we have a court, is Court here?
Yes.
Arizona?
Arizona, yes.
She was the subject of much conversation before. Okay, item number nine is the approval of minutes. We have a motion for the combined conference regular meeting of July 14th, 2020.
Make a motion, second.
We have a motion made in second, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next item, communications, number A.
Request received from the residents of Hewitt Avenue for permission to conduct the block party on Saturday, August 29th, from 12:00 to 8:00 p.m.
What do we normally?
Motion and second.
So I think we just forward it on to, do we have to vote on it, or what do we normally do?
Sure, it's fine.
Received, communication received.
Communication received.
Item number B.
D is a letter from Mayor Melham concerning the 2021 municipal budget with regret early.
Yes.
Received request received from St. Anthony's Church for permission to have a food truck on the church's property located at 63 Franklin Street from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday, beginning August 19th, until the end of the year.
Again with that, do we just forward that to the police department, or do we have to move it?
I have no problem with it, but if the other department has a problem, I don't know.
Do we move that? Why don't you move it, Ben?
Is this coming to us for approval?
Yeah, I think so.
And, but I don't feel like I have enough information with regards to voting for this, because we discussed this earlier, didn't we? At some point, another church having a food truck, like, are there any issues that we need to be aware of?
I don't think so, it has to be an event, and they're calling this an event.
Okay, that was the issue last time, yeah.
Somebody?
It's just going to be...
Move it, motion, need a motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Item number D is a letter, oh, sorry.
Letter D.
It could be item D. D.
Letter received from Mayor Melham to Evengea, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly, Coslenko, concerning the 2020 and 2021 municipal budget, would you like me to give the letter?
Yes, sure, it's just an email.
Yes.
This letter is responding, I wish we had more control to say over taxes being raised. Please know every single member of the council is the property owner and taxpayer. Last week, I asked the Township Manager to prepare drastic budget cuts so this doesn't happen again next year. I've attached that letter. Never in the history of Bellville has any mayor made such requests. And he gave her a link to a newspaper article. Tonight, livestreamed on the Township Facebook page and website, will be the budget presentation from our CFO. I encourage you to watch. The budget presentation is already on the Township website in PDF format. Regarding your letter, every single municipality is feeling the budget crunch. Many have raised taxes, some have instituted furloughs and/or layoffs, which is actually what I've asked for as we head into the 2021 budget. The tax rebound must happen every 10 years by state law and was ordered years before its release. We are working hard to right the ship. I believe heading into 2021, with anticipated revenues from new development, coupled with drastic budget cuts, we will get there. Again, sorry, I wish there was more I could do.
That's just an example of some of the emails I get, and some of my responses, what I have to respond with. Okay, we're on to ordinances, we have a couple, a couple of ordinances for introduction.
Want an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the Township of Bellville, Chapter 8, Death 6, Day 4, four-way stop interceptions designated.
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion made second, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Item number two, introduction. An ordinance to amend revised general ordinances of the Township of Bellville, Chapter 8, Death 16, handicap parking spaces.
Make a motion for introduction?
Second.
Motion made second for introduction, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Item number three for introduction, ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation in the amount of $513,000, $513,915.70 for expenses related to the retirement of employees in and by the township of Bellville in the county of Essex, New Jersey.
Make a motion for introduction?
Second.
Motion made second for introduction, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Item number four for introduction, bond ordinance providing for the scanning project for the code department in and by the township of Bellville in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $100,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of $95,000 bond or note to the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Make a motion for introduction?
Second.
Motion made second, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Item number five for introduction, bond ordinance for various improvements to the water utility in and by the Township of Bellville in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $550,000, therefore in authorizing the issuance of $522,500 bond or note to the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Make a motion for introduction? Second.
Motion made second for introduction, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Item number six, introduction, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriations and to establish a count bank.
Make a motion for introduction?
Second.
Motion made second for introduction, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Item number seven for introduction, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 3490 and 3492, creating personnel positions and adopting classification and compensation plans.
Make a motion for introduction? Second.
Motion made second for introduction, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Item number eight for introduction, ordinance to delete Chapter 34 entitled Trees and renaming same tree removal and protection.
Make a motion for introduction?
Second.
Motion made second for introduction, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Tomorrow, we will read that we are removing trees from Bellville. You believe, you believe that they're removing trees from Bellville? That's, that's what it's going to be tomorrow. Madam Clerk, can I ask you a question? I know sometimes you wait an extra meeting. I anticipate the second meeting in September, which is going to be budget final adoption, is going to be tough. Can, we have the time, can we get these on for the first meeting?
Absolutely.
In September? Because this is eight inter, eight ordinances for second and final, it's going to be a long, a long night.
Absolutely.
This, that frees up the second meeting in September for the budget here. Okay, because you have time to advertise that, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Item number C is, letter number C, ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading. Do you want to read our little notice?
Due to multiple executive orders declared by Governor Murphy in an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, the August 18th Township Council meeting will be closed to the general public. This meeting is being streamed live on the Township's website at www.bellville, www.bellvillenj.org, as well as on the Township's official Facebook page. The public always has an opportunity to make public comments to the Mayor Municipal Council during public meetings. With this new format, if you have a comment, it's submitted to the Township Clerk at kcabanal@bellvillenj.org by 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 18th. If there are any comments or questions on the ordinances for public hearing and second and final reading, please submit them as well to the Township Clerk at kcabanal@bellvillenj.org by 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 18th. The Township Clerk will read as the record your comments or questions concerning the ordinances during the public hearing, and will read your comments during the public portion of the meeting. Please submit your name, address, and state your comment.
So Madam Clerk, on these two specific ordinances for second and final reading, did we have any specific questions on these two?
No, I did not.
Nothing?
None.
Okay. So let's go with number one.
Item number one for public hearing, an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the codified ordinances of the Township of Bellville.
So Steve, we should still open and close public commenting?
Yeah.
So Vinnie? Okay.
Make a motion to open for public?
We have, we have a motion made in second to open public commenting, can I just do all in favor?
Yes, please, yes.
Aye.
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 All in favor, aye, sounds like everybody's in favor. So now we are in public commenting for the first ordinance?
Yes.
So Madam Clerk, do we have any specific questions by four o'clock today relating to this particular ordinance?
No, I did not, ma'am.
Did not.
I'll make a motion to close public comment and move for final adoption.
Final adoption, yes. Second.
We have a motion made in second, you want a roll call on that, since it's a vote? It's also a vote to adopt, so, okay, so motion made in second, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance approved.
Just to educate someone who might be listening or paying attention online, this was a change to our order rates, our order rates have not changed in six or eight years, even though the ordinance allows it to change with the cost of living. For those of you who don't know, the city of Newark charges us more money nearly every single year as part of the contract. So as they were charging us more money for the last six or eight years, we were not charging any more money, which left a hole of $1.6 million that we currently owe the city of Newark. So we owe Newark $1.6 million because of this deficiency, where we haven't increased the rate, and they have. So this corrects that, that correct, this corrects that, correct?
Absolutely.
And allows us to pay back the city of Newark. Okay. Ordinance number two for second and final reading.
Public hearing.
Second public hearing.
Ordinance number two for public hearing, ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the codified ordinances of the Township of Bellville.
Make a motion to open public?
We have a motion made in second to open public comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? No. No. So we are currently in public commenting. Madam Clerk, any specific question have you received pertaining to ordinance number two for public and second final reading?
No comments or questions were submitted.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to close public hearing and move for final adoption.
Second.
We have a motion made to close public and go for final adoption, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Depenian.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Those who are paying along online, this is for, that was for security gates, are no longer allowed in Bellville for new construction or new developments or new stores. Okay. Public comments. Item number twelve, public comments. We have a motion to open public comments?
Make a motion to open public comments.
Second.
We have a motion made to open public comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have to all be in fa- we can't not be in favor, right? What if it gets voted down? Alright, so, okay. We are in, we are in public comments.
Make a motion.
Madam Clerk, have you received any comments by four P.M. today for today's public participation?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Uh, are you gonna read the thingy again? Cause you have to read the same, it's the same disclosure.
Same disclosure.
Same disclosure as for second and final reading?
It's also part of the agenda.
It's also part of the agenda.
We read it as a courtesy, but.
Clearly, we're not paying you by the hour. Right? He's laughing at least. It's hard to tell if the mask on. Okay, so we have any, we do have a public comment. We have several public comments.
Yes.
Okay.
First one I have is from Carmella Fleishman from eight thirty-three Main Street. She says, Dear Mayor and Council, please read this for the record for the August eighteenth meeting. With the possible cancellation of the nine eleven twin beams of light event in New York City, could the township of Bellville do similar event locally with beams of blue light? I also wanted to acknowledge the office of the town manager for taking my call a couple of weeks ago when I saw a light on the traffic, saw a light at the traffic signal at Union Avenue, drawing Street was out, and it was fixed the very same day.
Thank you, Ms. Fleishman. I did also call the manager's office about that complaint and she got it done faster than I did. So thank you for that. And if you heard the beginning of our meeting, I did ask the manager, I did ask the manager that several other townships are doing this, the beams of light under North Arlington. My counterpart, Mr. Dan Pronte, uh, wants to know if other surrounding communities will participate, so I leave that in your very capable hands, Mr. Manager.
I'm honored.
Honored. Okay.
Next one is from Brian Fleishman. He is the lead editor of the Bellwatch. On July twenty-seventh, Bellwatch published hashtag justice for Bellville, an open letter to our Attorney General, Hravir Gribal, requesting an update, official statement, or even a simple, simple acknowledgement that his office is investigating this shameful series of events that led to an approximately four million dollar deficit within the Bellville School District at the end of the fiscal year 2014. A travesty for which Bellville taxpayers will be paying upwards of four hundred thousand dollars a year since 2015 and will continue to do so for at least another five to six years. On June fifth, 2018, New Jersey State Order of Stephen Els released his findings from a nearly four-year investigation into what had occurred. The copy of this report was delivered to the Attorney General's office either the same day or soon after. In his report, Mr. Els noted that the certain members he discovered during the course of investigation have been referred to the State Division of Criminal Justice. More than two years later, Bellville taxpayers have yet to hear from the Office of Attorney General about any investigation into those matters. Mr. Els report generally or are about any actions taken. In the interest of justice and bringing closure to Bellville residents, would this town council approve a resolution encouraging the Attorney General to investigate or if an investigation is underway, to update Bellville on efforts to investigate Mr. Els's findings and any other related matters?
Think the rules of justice go as slow as government? Um, no? Okay. Noted.
Number three is, well, Mr. William Cannon, one sixty-one Birch Drive. Which one would you like me to read first? The new one or?
Do they have to both be?
Who would like?
I would do the second one.
The second one?
Cause that's where he, yeah.
Yeah. Again, Mr. William Cannon, one sixty-one Birch Drive. He says, To whom it may concern, the enclosed letter was written nearly a year ago as a heartfelt note of gratitude for the services and efforts put forth by the Bellville Recreation Department and Director Augusta. The commendation was made not solely on the family's behalf, but was intended to reflect the sentiments of the hundreds of Bellville citizens I am to interacted with while coaching Recreation Department baseball, basketball, and football teams. The parents and their children whom I coached voiced to me with unanimous appreciation how grateful they were to have the programs the Recreation Department provided. It noted almost to a child just how much of a benefit they believe the programs provided their children. I sent copies of this commendation to the mayor, the members of the town council, and the town manager. It was a letter that was intended to serve as a thank you on behalf of myself, my family, and all those families available that I have the pleasure of getting to know for coaching the Recreation Department's athletic teams. I provided my address and phone number should any of the letters recipients choose to respond. To date, I have not received any indication that the letter has ever been received, read, or even acknowledged. I would ask that the letter be added to the minutes of any committee's review of the town's Recreation Department so that the voice of hundreds of citizens can be properly reflected in the gratitude for the rec's efforts due noted. I know that when those hard, when these hardworking parents go out of their way to thank me for my efforts with their children, I make the time to let them know that it is my pleasure and that they are most welcome. I trust the township can see the value of both recognizing the efforts of the Recreation Department and tipping their cap to all the residents who applaud them.
Okay. Then we have enclosed, oh, uh, oh, no, this is the letter from nineteen.
And that was from October two thousand and nineteen.
So this is a letter that's dated October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the October letter?
I don't know. Do you have to?
No.
No. Okay. So that was his public comment?
Yes.
And we have a copy of what he was referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted an acknowledgement that it had been received.
Yes.
And it was read, I remember. It was read.
Yeah. I, I remember. Okay. No problem. Item number four.
Maybe Kelly could just write him a thing that said we, we did receive.
The next one is from Bill Melvin, sixteen Uncle Street. I'm still waiting for reply to my question pertaining to the cost of the mayor and council taxpayers funded health care benefits. It was suggested that I send an Oprah request, but I, but I may contact the Office of Public Integrity and Accountability to help with my request. We would also like to hear an explanation from Mr. Iacono and Mayor Melvin as to why it's taken so long to obtain an answer to my very pithy question. Also, thank you to both Councilman Notari and Councilwoman Burke for voting no on this self-serving request for health benefits while many residents can't even afford to pay their outrageous property taxes.
So I think this question's been asked many times and been answered several times. Uh, we did say that if you want the documents, you'd have to fill out an Oprah request. An Oprah request is a one-page document with about three questions or four questions on it. It's far easier to fill that out than contact some office for help. Uh, but I think we've already filled out an Oprah on this, Steve. So it's ready to go. We just need to know how, who to send it to. You can have it. I don't think anybody's hiding from it. I think we voted on it in public. Uh, I know he notes.
The proper, the proper way to ask this question is through an Oprah.
An Oprah request. So an Oprah request is very easy and this gentleman.
Not ask some employee to provide a verbal, verbal information.
Right. So I'm, I'm gonna just repeat cause you're not mic'd. Yeah. Yeah, please.
Oh, yeah. Uh, the proper way to ask for this information is through an Oprah request, not by some, uh, not.
And we're not trying to sidestep the information.
No, not at all. It, it's, it's a legitimate question and, and a little legitimate Oprah request, but public information is not received by asking, especially public information such as this, by asking a question and asking Kelly or someone else to answer it verbally.
Right.
Um, that's not the way those and.
But I'm almost certain we've already performed the Oprah research. We have it ready to go.
We have, and the Office of Public Integrity Accountability is gonna tell them the same thing, that make an Oprah request, that's how public information is obtained.
Right.
In documents that show the information that's requested.
Thank you.
And I believe Kelly's already said that, uh, so, um.
And just.
Verbal on the record from anyone. And frankly, none of, none of the individuals, no mayor, none of the mayor and council actually have that red information readily available.
Right.
They would have to make the same kind of requests.
Sure. And I'll just add at the tail end of that, I know he thanks Councilman Notari, Councilwoman Burke for voting no on this self-serving request. Uh, just to set the record straight, while Councilwoman Burke did vote no on it, she does receive the benefits. So she receives the benefits but voted no in public against receiving the benefits. So I think you should also know that. I'm sorry?
Forget it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Cause you do receive the benefits, so I just wanted to make sure he understood that.
I will give a very small amount, not the extravagant amount that we discussed.
A small amount of benefits you receive. Okay. So since you voted against it, do you wanna relinquish them or not?
No, no.
Okay. Okay. No, that's fine. I just think the public should know that. Okay. Do we have? Okay. Anything else? Uh, we have number five.
It is from Elsa Santos, Chief State. We live at sixteen Lang Street here in this beautiful town of Bellville. My sons own this property since two thousand and seventeen, but unfortunately, we have had two bitter experiences, experiences during this time. The robbery went daylight, a truck that was parked on the street right in front of our property, and a package stolen from our porch. We probably need more police patrol in this area, but what we certainly need in our neighborhood is working streetlights. We feel unsafe at night walking to our home from the Silver Lake train station. It would be great if you would help us in this manner so we can walk our streets with more confidence in our safety. Thank you for this matter.
Thank you. So I think I, I met Ms. Santos, uh, during the flag raising yesterday. If this is the same one, I'm not sure. Um, so obviously, Chief is here. He heard, you know, about the patrols there. But Anthony, if we can figure out, we know where the Silver Lake train station is, we know where she lives, maybe, uh, our new quality of life person can walk that route and see if there's any lights. I mean, the best way to do is for a resident to give us the number of the, that maybe we can do that and have that person do that.
Absolutely.
So we could, and the best way, just so residents know, the best way for us to get a streetlight repaired or, or bulb replaced is to know the pole number. There's actually numbers that you can call PSC to yourself, but we don't mind doing that. Uh, in this particular case, we have the town manager, uh, have one of our, uh, like a property maintenance type person who does some quality life issues now for us, go out there and just walk that route. And I know he'll be doing it during the daytime, but maybe he can figure out what poles are not working. Okay. Item number six.
I'm Shatia Ford. She states, I'm a resident on Round Street and I'm writing to request speed bumps on the block between Holmes and Academy Street. Speed bumps will help slow down fast-moving cars that cut through this block from Main Street for access to the bridge. Furthermore, with the new preschool openings soon on this block, I am sure the parents and other residents on Round Street would appreciate the safe measures taking place to remind traffic to slow down. I hope you take this request into consideration. Also, I noticed the old Bell Farms sign be taking down the plaza. Will something occupy that, that space soon? If so, what should we be expecting? Thanks so much.
So Ms. Ford, thank you for reaching out. I have a, it seems like a standard reply that I give, uh, as I respond to many, many email, uh, requests for speed bumps, four-way traffic signs, uh, four-way stop signs, blinking lights, uh, speeding is a pandemic, uh, in Bellville, almost every community. And I think everybody wants speed bumps. I wouldn't mind having them where I live. Uh, in the past, our police department has been a little resistant because not only do speeding cars slow down, but, uh, first responders have to slow down, including ambulances. Uh, so that's always, they've always been somewhat resistant to that. As I tell everybody I tend to reply to on email, uh, if you go to our website, bellvillenj.org, go to departments, go to police department, on the right-hand side, you can see the, uh, Traffic Lieutenant, Mr. Pignataro. His phone number's there, his email's there. I always tell residents, while you might see us, the members of the council voting on specific things like four-way stop signs and such, that always comes after a traffic study and based on a recommendation from our police department. So the best thing for you to do is to please start with our traffic division, all the contact information's there on the website. They will go out, uh, they'll look at historic accidents in that area and/or tickets in that area. They will then give a recommendation of whether or not they feel, uh, a four-way stop sign or, or something of that like is warranted. That comes before us and we usually rubber stamp those type of things on behalf of the police department. So thank you for that. Uh, but that's definitely the best place to start, uh, if you haven't done so already. Bell Farms, uh, myself and the manager met with the property manager of that development at Strip Mall a couple of months ago. Uh, I can't say, uh, much about it, but I'm told, or we were told that another grocery store's coming in. We were told it was high-end. Um, the def, you know, the phrase high-end is relative to the person saying it and receiving that. Uh, we were told high-end. We were told that there are four of those locations in Manhattan, uh, in New York City. So I would think it's, it's a nicer type chain. That was all he was willing to tell us. I did not know the Bell Farms sign came down. Maybe that's a good sign that he's actually getting ready to, to move. I know the landscape escaping there looks nice.
It is nice.
Um, so I think he is making quite an investment into that Strip Mall. So I'm optimistic that we're gonna get a nice, a nice store in there, uh, relatively soon. Anything else?
One more from Mary Ozawas, ninety-five Bell Street. Ordinance number three, please explain. Is this for buyout for certain township employees? If yes, who are they and what are their job titles? Will they be replaced? And their positions advertised for the public? In the past buyouts, from what I have seen, did not save money. Ordinance number seven, how many physicians are listed in this ordinance? Name the physician, who was in the job. Current salary of that person, who is the proposed dollar in, what is the proposed dollar increase? Are any of the physicians vacant or is anyone retiring from the position? I read a press release last night saying without draft the cuts, the budget residents will face a tax decrease. What have you done since, since March, when much of the state went into lockdown? You had months to plan for cuts. With the current shortfall of revenue, the mayor and council should not have allowed the renovate, renovations of your office, health benefits, which I ask if they are legal. Rumor has it that an employee close to you may be moved to the position in the clerk's office in the near future.
Something's wrong.
How many people that worked on your election campaign now have employment in the township of Bellville? The public should be allowed to attend and speak on the budget when there is a public hearing, even if one person at a time. Stop using the COVID-19 excuse. In my opinion, I see your actions as a one-way street so citizens cannot reply in person to your Donald Trump fake news. Jaymon and County Majority for allowing this.
So while Mr. Manager prepares to answer ordinance number three and ordinance number seven, I'll skip down to, um, that I am not allowing people to come into meetings, uh, that "I am not allowing people to come into meetings, uh, stop using COVID-19 as an excuse, my actions are a one-way street, so citizens cannot reply in person to my Donald Trump fake news." So, I will, uh, this has come up a couple of times. I have been an advocate of in-person meetings. I remain an advocate of in-person meetings. I would prefer to have the public here. To me, it's easier to chair a meeting with the public here and reading, especially when you get public comments that are the same questions three or four times. Uh, normally, if the public was here, you would not do that. I tend that I can go faster and administer the meeting faster and easier if the public is here. So much so, because there will be a conspiracy that I'm lying tomorrow. On June 13th, I sent a, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, June 16th, I sent an email to Mr. Martino, our township attorney. If anybody wants to Oprah that, I would waive, I can waive privilege?
No, you can't waive it.
Okay. I, I can put it out there, though. I'm, I'm gonna read the email. So the email I sent to, cause I want people to know that I want the public in a meeting. I sent an email to the township attorney. It was called, the subject was "Our next council meeting, June 23rd." It was sent to the town attorney. I said, "I understand that the public was not permitted to attend this week's BOE meeting. I am uncertain as to why. It was my understanding that as per the governor's recent executive order," now this is dated by two months, by the way, "the governor's recent executive order, indoor gatherings could now be held with a room capacity of 25% for 50% people, whichever is fewer." That has now changed, by the way. I bring this up because I'd like to have the public back at our next council meeting on June 23rd. Our current room capacity is 120, so 40 attendees, including mayor, council, and professionals, should be allowed. This week, outdoor dining is permitted, and next week, in-house services like salons and barber shops open. It's time the full council should be present and seated." That was my email to the town attorney. I want in-person meetings. The town attorney then submitted an email to me. He's staring at me, so I'm assuming I can't read it, but it was basically that as per the executive orders, we can't do that because of capacity and the amount of people in the room. Now, that was dated. That was when you can have up to 50 people or 25%. The governor has now since reduced that to, I think, 25%. No matter the room, it's the building size. So the next argument would be, why can't we go to the high school and go in the auditorium? There's a larger capacity there. More recent executive orders since this say 25%, it doesn't matter the size. We can meet in Giant Stadium. It doesn't matter. It's still 25%. Uh, 25 people. Is that correct? You can talk to the microphone if you want. This is why this mic don't work.
That's the max, although I don't agree that it's Giant Stadium, the most people could be 25. I don't agree with that.
Well, it's open-air, maybe it's different.
It, it's, uh, and I don't believe it's the building. I believe it's the room. So, it would be 25%, up to 25, in, in this room. The problem is, the problem we have is, you can't control the amount of people that come. Uh, you can't deny people, and...
You would have to deny people more than that, and you're not allowed to do that.
You can't do that, so everybody's gotta be treated the same.
Can you imagine if we had a meeting here with 25 people and Mr. Droz was the 26th person not allowed in?
Yeah.
It, it wouldn't work.
Also, we don't have, uh, two other council people here. Um, they would add to the number that, and, and especially when it comes to the budget, um, ideally, you'd like to have all the competent heads here to answer questions. Uh, when you do that, you have that added problem of even, you can never reach it.
Right.
And the way these seats are set up, we've reviewed this already, the way these seats are set up...
We even had the fire department in here to count occupancy.
In order to have, and there's reduced capacity since the, the row was moved. So in order to have it, every other row would have to have one person in it, um, and you just couldn't do it the way it is.
Got it. Point made. I would prefer in-person meetings. We cannot have in-person meetings. Mr. Iacono?
I just want to add, before I answer number three and seven, I just want to add that, uh, an additional point of clarification. Our health officer, against the flip-flop, was also the health officer in our, has not, um, for better words, endorsed, uh, face-to-face meetings. And actually, as the health office officer, he has strongly suggested that until he gives us the all clear, that we do not have, um, in-person meetings. And he is the health officer, and, uh, that's the same instructions he gave to the Orange Council. And, uh, he basically says that he's wanting to leave and he steps the state health department.
None of that changes the fact that I would prefer in-person meetings, but we can't have them. Uh, item number, uh, ordinance number three.
Ordinance number three, there are specifically, uh, two positions, um, are vacant, two positions are filled. On all four of the five, there is a significant reduction in the funding dollars. So, that takes care of three and seven.
Wait, timeout. He also says, "In the past, buyouts, from what he has seen, did not save any money." Can you educate the public on the gross amount of money we're gonna be saving because of these? Because Mr. Droz doesn't understand that.
I'm sorry. Right now, we have, uh, four, and by the end of the week, we may have five signed agreements. These are employees that are making, uh, anywhere from 70 up to $140,000.
So let's average it at 100,000. We have five employees. Let's just call it $500,000 in salaries that are gonna get a buyout.
Some of those positions will not be filled, and the positions that do get filled will be getting filled at a lower salary, you know, based on, uh, based on the...
My math says that's a great cost savings.
The, the numbers don't lie. Uh, they, they don't lie. We will...
Some positions will not get filled.
And the ones that do get filled are gonna get filled at a lower rate.
Not only a lower rate, because traditionally, you start at a lower rate, but this council's actually lowering the lower rate, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, cause contrary to popular belief out on the internet today, people think they're actually getting raises. Um, so we're actually lowering the low rate. So we have employees at a high range. A lot of people don't understand government. Your, your title might be 70,000 to 95,000. After 20 years, you're at 95,000. You retire. If it needs replacing, you start at the low side, 70. That's an automatic cost savings. But this council is actually reducing the starting salary of a lot of those positions, ones that we think might get refilled.
Absolutely.
And as you said, several positions won't get filled at all. So if that's two positions set, and they average 90 to 100,000 dollars, that's already a $200,000 savings going to next year. Am I correct?
You are 100% correct.
Okay, so, okay, I think we...
I just, I kind of combined them, so between the early retirement and the...
Oh, I'm sorry. That, that answered both of them.
The early retirement and the ordinance that we introduced tonight, we're introducing at low salaries.
And the range that, there's also, when there are ranges for the township manager, those of you who follow along, our township manager's been with us for one year, but we hired him a year ago. He was the first time Belleville ever hired a professional outside township manager. Uh, we gave him that chance. We hired him. He agreed graciously to accept the previous salary that a part-time township manager was making. We have some surveys of surrounding areas, surrounding municipalities, for northern New Jersey, for municipalities that are in this demographic, this population range. We know what that range is. We, just because we're setting a range does not give you, uh, a, a raise. Uh, your position is set by contract. We will have to strike a dollar amount. Uh, if we consider bumping you up above the part-time salary of your predecessor, we would have to strike that contract and vote on that in public by resolution and everything else. So just because you might see a range, that does not mean there's a raise coming there. It just means that we have the ability to land in between them. Your counterpart on the school district, Mr. Dr. Tomko, makes well north of 210 or 20,000 dollars a year. Uh, just to let everybody know, apples to apples, one person runs the school district, one person runs the township. Okay, and like you said, your answer basically covered both. Madam Clerk, do we have any other questions for public commenting?
No, you don't.
Okay. I need a motion. Get out of public comment.
Make a motion.
Motion made in second to exit public commenting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are out of public comments. Next item is our consent agenda. Uh, orders, uh, agenda did change a little bit. I don't think any resolutions were added. Uh, we would just wanna take a moment to go through it, see if anybody's to pull anything. I already know I gotta take out 13 and 14. Yes, 12 as well. Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna take, I entertain a motion to move the consent agenda with the exception of items 12, 13, and 14. We have a motion made.
Second.
And second now, for the consent agenda with the exception of 12, 13, and 14. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeny?
Yes.
Bransiana?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumeloburg?
Yes.
Mayor Malmham?
Yes. Next, uh, we can move 12, 13, and 14 together. I just need a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion made in second to move 12, 13, and 14 as one. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeny?
Yes.
Bransiana?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumeloburg?
Yes.
Mayor Malmham?
Take no part. Uh, next item on our agenda is new business. I actually have something that I forgot to mention in my mayor's report. We have an upcoming activity at the Belleville Public Library. It is gonna be a free hot dog event, uh, sponsored in partnership with the Friends of the Library. It is gonna be Thursday, August 27th, from 4 to 6. Thursday, August 27th, from 4 to 6. It's first come, first served, while supplies last. I hope they have more than a dozen. It's gonna be at our Belleville Public Library. Again, Thursday, the 27th. Uh, we'll have it on our website and social media as well. Anybody else for new business? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.